I will call the meeting to order. Um, roll call, please.
Yes, here.
Rachel.
Here.
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 Here. Yes.
Here.
Then we have a full house. And the item number five, um, in light of obviously, uh, some of the discussions that have happened in Washington and funding, I'm gonna pull the prospective solar project on the West Liquor Store, um, bring that back at a later date if, uh, if there is funding available. So the first item on the agenda is a discussion regarding, uh, West Ridge Mall, um, entering into a community development agency agreement with Ottertail County for the West Ridge Mall, potential assignment of purchase agreement, and I'll call upon Andrew, who's already up there.
Yeah.
At the podium.
I'm gonna spend a lot of time here this morning, so thank you, your honor. Members, I'm also Brian today, if you hadn't yet picked up.
Yep.
So I got a number of items. Uh, thank you, uh, Mayor, for leading with that. Um, it is our intent to get more clarity on some of the federal rules that are happening, and I think that's, um, the League of Minnesota Cities, the National League of Cities, everybody's, I won't use the word panicking, but scrambling to try to understand, um, the impacts of executive actions and some of the executive orders, and just getting more clarity, I think, helps us speak more intelligently about that. So, more related to the mall, um, as you all recall, uh, in the January 6th council meeting, the city council appointed a task force to begin meeting about the West Ridge Mall. That task force is comprised of council members Mortensen and Kildy, Mayor Hicks, myself. We are also joined by Clara Beck and a couple representatives from the county. We've met one time, um, which kind of leads to this discussion today. That meeting focused pretty heavily on the relationship, or the potential relationship, I should say, between the city of Fergus Falls and Ottertail County, uh, more specifically the county CDA. And, um, like I mentioned, representatives of the county were at that meeting to kind of help explain what the CDA is, how they operate, the structure of that, what this could look like, and what this could mean. Um, and they're in the audience as well today, so when we, when we get to that point, I'll certainly look to them for some additional information and to answer the questions that you may have. The task force, after having that meeting, asked that this be on the, the next agenda, and, and that's where we are today. So, I wanted to start that discussion. The primary discussion is related to the CDA. Um, I wanted to also include the potential for assignment of the purchase agreement in the event that the council, uh, wanted to take those actions at the same time. That's always an option to you. A couple of things, the reason that we're talking about the CDA now, and, and we have in the past, and, uh, you know, last time it wasn't the right time, but, uh, the reason that it's coming back now is because the, uh, purchase agreement for the West Ridge Mall, uh, has a contingency in there that for a property to close, it would have to be assigned, when I say that, or it, it would be the purchase agreement would have to be assigned to Ottertail County. Well, Ottertail County's economic development arm is the county CDA, so, um, they would ultimately transfer the, uh, purchase agreement to the CDA to oversee whatever project happens at West Ridge Mall. In order for the Ottertail County CDA to operate in Fergus Falls, or the jurisdiction of Fergus Falls, the city council needs to pass a resolution to allow that to happen, or, or to participate in the CDA. We currently are the only city, um, that is not part of the CDA. We would be the last city or township to join if the council chooses to do that. While we're specifically talking about the, uh, West Ridge Mall related to this, uh, conversation today, there are some other benefits of being a member of the CDA. Um, again, I think CDA representatives can speak more to that, but they're very heavily focused on housing, and, uh, in your pack, it was a pamphlet of some of the, uh, benefits that they have related to housing. Some of the ones that I thought were interesting were, um, down payment assistance for first-time home buyers, and then some rehabilitation programs as well. Um, some of those things exist in other forms with other partners of the city, but, um, this would open up new dollars that would be accessible by, um, homeowners in Fergus Falls, potentially developers, and other folks, uh, that have interest in those programs. Um, I will say that the task force continues to meet. We have a meeting, uh, immediately after this meeting today, where we're gonna dive more into the utility side of things, getting a good understanding of, um, the situation out there, and, uh, we've had a good dialogue with Ottertail County, and, and I think there's a shared vision of, um, having those utility separations addressed first and foremost as part of any action that happens out at the mall, um, to secure and stabilize the existing businesses. So, um, with that being said, I'm gonna maybe pause there. We'll talk specifically about the CDA, see if, uh, our county friends have anything to add, and then maybe I'll dive into a little bit more related to, um, next steps, purchase agreement, that kind of thing. The one, the one thing I do wanna say before I forget is that the CDA is a nine-member board, and what we learned last week when we, or two weeks ago when we met with them is, three of those members have ties to Fergus Falls. It's a countywide board, but, uh, we have Commissioner Sean Sullivan, who is on that board, Commissioner Kurt Mortensen, who's on the board. He represents a portion of the city in the southeastern part of the community, and then, um, Jeff Ackerson, CEO of Vector Windows is also on the board. So, um, a third of the board essentially already has pretty, pretty focused Fergus Falls interests, and, um, you know, I guess that's always good to have. So with that being said, I'm prepared, your honor, to, um, see if the county folks have anything to add at this stage, or if there's any questions, and then I'll jump back in on, on some of the purchase agreement stuff.
Nick, have you got anything to add?
Wait for questions.
Right, thanks. I mean, I think the other thing to add was that, you know, um, you know, it's very clear that the county will only, you know, do a project if requested by the city. Um, so, it, the, the county is not going to come in and carte blanche, take over, over kind of either any ongoing projects, or, or any future projects, unless the city, um, you know, directs them and asks them to, to do so. So with that, is there?
One more point to that, and you sparked a thought. The other thing that we had, I think, a good understanding of is that, um, if the, if this is approved, and if the purchase agreement is assigned to them, and this project proceeds, um, they've committed to ongoing dialogue, but ultimately, to your point, Mayor, um, when we turn this over to them, they are gonna be in control of the project, and they're gonna make those decisions, their board is gonna make those decisions, but they are certainly open and willing to, um, continue to discuss things with the city, um, and get that dialogue. But, but there would be a clear delineation of, of, you know, who's making decisions.
On, on the specific project.
Correct.
Thank you. Any questions?
You know, I think with the CDA, with the county, it's gonna be a good, another, um, spot for us to get stuff from, but also they can work with Greater Fergus Falls. If Greater Fergus Falls has something that came in the door, they can go talk to the CDA, where they can't do that really now, they have to come talk to us. And, and I think it'd be really, if you really wanna look, it'd be three entities that will work on Greater, right, Economic Development, Fergus Falls, and on, and the seventh, when we talk about that, it's gonna be, I think, a huge plus for that meeting to, uh, to have, and everybody, I've talked to the Greater Fergus Falls people, and I know that Nick and, and Sean will work together with them, so we can all three work together, I think it'll be the best thing for the city to move forward, and probably the cheapest way to do it.
I guess I have a question too, Mayor, and thanks for bringing that up, Scott. My question was, what is the status of Greater Fergus Falls? From what I understand, they have not received any payment from the city of Fergus Falls. They're looking on their sixth, I believe, executive director in the last five years. Is it still together, or is it not?
I can kinda answer that, your honor. That's, there's, there, uh, there's, there's a shakeup, let's call it, in the board. I got on in August, and we talked about different things, about how the board was gonna move forward, and we, uh, restructured it, and the board is sitting there right now, waiting to see what this council is gonna do, and what direction they wanna go. I mean, there's been a lot of shakeups since the election, and, uh, they don't wanna, you know, they're all business people in Fergus Falls, they're not hired, they're all volunteering, like, you know, and so, they're not gonna spend a lot of time on anything until they know what direction the, the council's gonna go with them. Um, they have re, I don't, Bill, have they received their payment? They just haven't got a bill to it yet, is that?
Nope, they haven't invoiced.
So they haven't invoiced, they're just kinda waiting on the, on that. The money's allocated to them, they're, uh, the fifty thousand dollars we give to them from the, and we voted on the budget is there. So I think they're just waiting for us to, uh, see what direction we're gonna go. Um, I know the conversation with the CD, about the CDA's been a good conversation. Um, I missed the last meeting, we have a meeting today, I think, at, uh, noon, Mike, is, is that right?
Is that eight?
Eight o'clock? Well, that's, I seen it on my phone, you're right, eight o'clock this morning. So I think that, so I think that that's gonna be one of the conversations we've had on the, um, Carrie has taken, Carrie Brimmo's taken over, um, as the, uh, president, I guess she'll call it, or the, the chair of the board, and, uh, we're gonna move forward, and she wants to just kinda know what the direction of the council is, it's not, she doesn't wanna work against the council, or doesn't want the council to work against, we just wanna know if there's communication out there, and make sure that everybody's on the same path and the same, um, direction, instead of having kind of controversy back and forth. And so that's where they're, we're just sitting and waiting, and they're gonna, they'll make a, I think the mayor will sit down with them after the, um, retreat, and, uh, we'll go from there and, and decide what we're gonna do with that.
Yeah, and, and to add to that, I met with Carrie Brimmo last week, and basically, you know, it's on a holding pattern until after the retreat, and the council decides the direction of economic development for the city. So no payments have been made.
Good, and I think that was directed, I know it's allocated, but I know, I believe it was, uh, I didn't hear that it was not invoiced yet, but I did hear that it was not going to be paid until we heard something, what was going on.
Correct.
So I just wanna clarify that point with, uh, council member Rachel Sals.
Is there any other questions on the CDA?
So I know that the county CDA is pretty focused on, um, housing right now, but can you tell me, are there county-level resources that are available to attract new businesses and industries to Fergus Falls?
Thank you for the question. Um, so, yeah, so, uh, new to the CDA, and, and my objective is, is really to, uh, build trust between the city and the county that for whatever reason has not, has not been there in the past. So, uh, I think there's a great opportunity for us to partner together. We are focused on housing, we are focused on childcare, we are focused on business development. It's a three-pronged focus with the CDA, and I'll ask Nick to kinda keep me honest here if I start going down a wrong path, but we do have those resources within the county to, uh, to promote business development, to seek out new economic development within the county.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Um, I guess I do have another one. Any specific programs that are targeted to support rural or underserved communities that Fergus Falls could leverage?
Speak, like, for example?
Um, because we're, you know, not part of the metropolitan area, we're kind of that greater Minnesota area, any specific programs that are out there?
For underserved communities?
Yeah, yeah, for, that we would be able to leverage here, that you're aware of.
Do you know of anything, Nick?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, council member, um, the programs that are available through the CDA include different pots of dollars, so, um, one of the things that the CDA is, leverages state grants and programs, a lot of times, oftentimes, those are specifically for, uh, rural communities, um, underserved communities, and so, whether it's Minnesota housing grants, and I will say the CDA has been really successful, Clara probably works even closer, um, with some of those, uh, grant applications, but they've been very successful to go after those large pots of state funds that are designated for greater Minnesota.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for you?
I don't.
With that, oh, sorry, Mike?
Yeah, thank you, your honor, appreciate it. Sean, I don't know if this will be as much for you as, as for Nick, and I enjoyed our getting together in our group, uh, I think it was very productive for us, but, uh, has the CDA taken on a project of this size, the mall, before? I never did get a chance to ask that the other day.
Yeah.
This is a pretty good square footage, uh, large size, will this be the biggest the CDA's ever taken on?
Mr. Mayor, council members, um, I don't know if it would be the biggest, um, there've been some pretty big projects, they're working on a large redevelopment in Pelican Rapids of the old highway garage, which has been, um, redeveloped into a, I think, a thirteen-site housing development, um, square footage-wise, in terms of a single structure, I think certainly this is, would be the largest project, um, that the CDA has worked on.
And also, Nick, we talked about, which was, which was so helpful when we met, that the CDA kinda works at the discretion of the city. Uh, so the CDA, say we came in and we said, hey, we want some help with demolition, we want some help with that, those are projects that the CDA could possibly do, uh, with, with direction from the city, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, council member, uh, always the role of the CDA is to be supportive and additive to the goals of the city, and so in almost every instance, um, the city approaches the CDA, says this is a project, this is a priority for us, we're working with X and X developer to get this done, this is the type of support we need in this. I think, uh, as we talked about, the difference in this project, and the request of the CDA, and probably the, or the request of the city in this situation, and the unique kind of, um, quality of this request, is that the request was, would you assume this agreement and ultimately oversee the development? There've been a couple other instances in where the city says, look, we don't, we don't have the capacity, we don't wanna be responsible for the overall redevelopment, um, but in most cases, we're providing, it's always supplemental and additive, um, based on the goals of the city, correct?
Would this be unusual, Nick, to, and, true question I'm asking, that you would actually, the county, the CDA, would take over the whole building, the whole project, the whole thing, without a developer that's in place? Usually you're working with a developer assisting them, this would be kinda the whole deal on you, is this unusual for the CDA?
Mr. Mayor, uh, council member, I would, no, I wouldn't say it's unusual, we have the exact same scenario, uh, in Pelican Rapids right now, where we're doing a redevelopment, a housing redevelopment, um, working on the strategy, kind of the long-term goals of that project, getting the infrastructure in place, and then ultimately doing RFPs to get, uh, develop, actual builders in place to do some of that construction. So, um, we do both, we, we have the capacity and the experience to oversee the project, but I would say more often, um, it is in partnership with the city or another developer.
Okay. Where, this project, though, the city's gonna turn it over and kinda back away a little bit, so this would be more, more county-driven, uh, if I have it right, right?
Mr. Mayor, council member, in the event that the city wants to assign this purchase agreement, and if the CDA accepts that, the CDA would, to your point, be taking on the responsibility of the redevelopment. Long-term, however, I think it's very unlikely that the CDA would go beyond, um, readying that site for private investment, and so, the, the extent to how far that goes, beyond separation of utilities and kind of those high priority things, will determine, will be based on what other types of outside dollars, grand dollars, state dollars can be brought in, to take that as far as they can go, to make that site ready for a developer.
Yeah. I think one of the other things that, um, I, I want the constituents to know, or at least I wanna know from your end, which is, is great knowledge, and, and they're hearing more this morning than they've heard in, in a long time, which is, is why we're having the dialogue, you and I. What would be the difference between the CDA's role and what you could accomplish at that mall, if the city owned the mall, and if you owned the mall? Would the CDA's ability to do things, grants, funding, help out the city, let's say demolition, would it change it all between whoever owned that entity out there?
Mr. Mayor, council member, I wanna make sure I understand the question. Is the, is the question, could the city provide the same role that is being requested of the county CDA? I just wanna make sure I understand your question.
Let's, I'll throw two scenarios. One scenario, we sign over the purchase agreement, it goes right to the county, right? You grab it as the CDA, you tear the building down, the ground is flat, you have certain things that will assist you to do that, right? You've got grants and funds and different things that you can go and do. That would be one scenario. If the other scenario was, the city bought this mall, but didn't turn it over to the county, but we asked you to come in as that gap, that gap funder for, like, demolition, and then the ground is, is flattened after that, where city would have control of that ground? What is your position? Do you have the ability to still do the grants, the funding, to assist us in that intermediate role as the demolisher of that building, where the city can still obtain that land, use it for redevelopment, and in turn, get profit back for the citizens of this community? I'm asking as a question, so anyone in the community could know, this, uh, I don't know the answer.
Mr. Mayor, uh, council member, I'm not, I'm not sure that I know the answer, uh, I'm not necessarily, I don't know that I necessarily understand the answer, the question, to fully answer your question, could a city do the exact same project that the CDA is going to do? Absolutely. Um, I think the question I would have would be from the staff at the city level, um, do they have the capacity and the, um, cap, capacity frankly, to do the work that would be necessary to kind of move this along, to get a site ready for a developer?
But I think also, just, I think what Mike is saying is if the city didn't assign it to the county, you know, obviously, but then, you know, ask the county for, for assistance, but that could only, that assistance could only happen from the CDA if this, if the city, if the city was a member of the CDA, and so it would be, we, we would be no different than any other, quote, developer coming to the county CDA saying, we've got this project in, on this piece of land, can the CDA help us develop this project and, and help, help us with the, with the grant, you know, applications, et cetera, et cetera? So I thi, I think the answer to the question is that technically the city could run the project, if the city wished to do that, but in order to ask, or, or to obtain assistance from the county CDA, we'd have to be a member of the society. So.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that, yes, in the event that the city is a partner of the CDA, the, the request would come in, just like any other request, the CDA board would assess the, evaluate the request and say, yep, we have the capacity, or we have the resources to support that, um, in the same way any other project would come in. Thanks for the clarity on that.
That's all right.
Thank you, Nick, appreciate it, your honor.
Your honor, just back when we started this process, when did that start? Back in July, am I, Andrew, when did we start doing this?
Summertime.
Summertime, it was a while ago. The council's intention was never, you know, and that's the old council, I'm not saying we're the new council, that's the follow-through, was never to control this project. We, we were gonna work together with the county to get the grant, get the grant done, and then turn it over to the county. We do not have the capacity, nor I don't think we, the council, at that time, or, I'm not sure how many of the council members, I can speak for myself, I don't think the city has the capacity to do it, I don't think we wanna do it, I think we wanna turn it over and just get this thing in the right hands, and get this project moving forward with the county. I don't think have, us having control is gonna be a benefit one way or the other, I think no matter what the end product would be, who's gonna, who's gonna, who are we gonna get in there and help to get in there with, let's just call it the three entities, the city council, Greater Fergus Falls, and, and the CDA, I think that's, that's our goal, and I think we'd want the county to be, take that role, the lead role, and, uh, not so much that they'll have the control of it, but they will also work with us to make this work in the right direction, I believe, and that's kinda where we started this, this project with, and I believe that's where we're still at, but, uh, Councilman Mortensen brings up a good point, and I just think that, uh, we'll have to just decide that on Monday night, what we're gonna do, what direction we're gonna go.
Your honor, I have one, can I ask one? I have a couple of things. I'm, the way I'm looking at this, and correct me if I'm wrong, the CDA decision is separate from what's happening with the mall. We're making a decision that's separate, and I think we need to make that clear as we have the conversation, because I think there's some confusion in the public, that they go, they do go arm-in-arm, the mall can't happen with the county unless we do this, but we can do this and do nothing with the mall, too, and I think that's an important part to keep in mind. Um, another question I got from someone that contacted me is, is there any risk for an increased tax levy to the citizens of Fergus Falls by joining the CDA? Or is it, will their taxes stay the same, or could there be more levied taxes by doing this to our citizens coming from the county?
Mr. Mayor.
You're paying now.
We, right, except my understanding is, that's correct, yes.
You're paying now without the benefit, basically.
That's correct. The, the, the CDA exists, it's, it's, uh, funded via special benefits levy and general levy, and, um, so the citizens of Fergus Falls participate that in, currently.
Right, right now, the city of Fergus Falls is paying for, our people in the city are paying for, everybody else is, that'll get the benefit from the CDA, Detroit, or Battle Lake, Dalton, I think, believe has one, Pelican has one going, so, why not get us in, on board? I mean, we're not gonna, we're paying it now, and we're not getting no benefits, so I think it'd be a great thing for us to get into the CDA first. I agree that, they gotta come hand-to-hand, but the first thing would be the CDA, then the mall, I believe, is all we're looking at, so.
Monk.
Your honor, thank you. Uh, Mr. Brimso, thank you for bringing this in front of the committee of the whole. The CDA agreement between the city and the county are a step. We haven't, as a council, decided what we're gonna do with the property. There's two things, we do buy it, and, or we don't buy it. So, is signing the agreement with the CDA right now kinda getting the, the cart in front of the horse?
I don't, you know, Andrew.
Your honor, council member Layton, I think the question is not whether we do buy it or don't buy it, I think the question is whether we assign it or we don't assign it.
Yeah.
And if we assign it, then we have to approve the CDA resolution. If we don't assign it, then the purchase agreement fails to close, and the property's not acquired by the city or the county.
Thank you. If we assign it, then do we lose our voice as to what happens with this?
Well, your honor, council member Layton, good question, and, and I, I kind of alluded to it earlier, but, um, and I think some of the questioning was getting at that, too. The CDA board will be in control if we assign it, so in essence, they make the decisions. However, they've committed to us, as I understand it, that, um, there would be continued dialogue to whatever extent, you know, that's not us dictating exactly what happens, but certainly, um, you know, as Nick mentions, they're, they're supportive and additive, they ultimately wanna do things that, uh, the city asks them to do, and, uh, you know, I think if, if the city council felt strongly about something, they would listen to that. But again, they would be in control and make the final decisions.
Bill.
Maybe you wanna point out, who is actually receiving the grant? Again, the, who is the, because the grant funds are how this is being purchased.
Yeah, so I was gonna talk a little bit about the deed funding here on the second half, you know, we, we did apply jointly, but the county is the, the recipient of the grant fund, so if ultimately, and I think that's how I would've maybe responded to, uh, Councilman Mortensen's question about the difference between ownership and, um, you know, I don't believe that we would be eligible to spend those funds if the county's not involved. And, and those funds, I mean, the six hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant that was received to go towards acquisition plus, um, addressing the situation at the mall. This is probably a good time for me to answer, there was a question that was raised at the task force meeting, um, which was posed to deed, and that question was, would we be eligible to use those funds to just simply, um, disconnect utilities, or separate utilities and stabilize businesses without actually acquiring the mall, because really that's the, the immediate need, and that's the most important need? And the response that was received, um, and I'm speaking on behalf of Amy Baldwin, she's the one who reached out, uh, as the applicant, uh, the county, and the response that Amy received was that if you change the scope of your project, you have to reapply and get rescored. So basically, no, we have to use the funds the way that they're, uh, proposed to be used in the application, and that is having site control and, um, acquisition of, of the property. So, um, it kind of extinguishes that angle of it, uh, which I guess isn't surprising, but it was a fair question, and, uh, but I think, good point, Bill, that the deed funds do dictate some of how this process may play out if this moves forward.
A good point, thank you, uh, because I had the same question, what other options do we have with the six hundred and fifty thousand? That grant was written with a heavy weighted, a heavy weight on housing. Are we limited with the state as to what, if we acquired, it has to be housing, or doesn't have to be housing?
I'll let Nick speak to that, since it is the counties.
Mr. Mayor, um, council member Layton, the, the application, uh, really, in the six hundred and fifty thousand, is gonna go towards, of course, acquisition and any cleanup and separation that can occur. Anything beyond that is gonna take additional grant applications, but I don't see any limitation, and in fact, I think zoning currently would prohibit, um, housing.
Correct.
So it would require work with the council, um, and planning commission on actual change in zoning, so I don't see any limitations other than zoning in terms of use.
Yeah, it's just my memory of, of reading the grant application, it was heavily weighted to housing and saving for businesses and, and local employment. We acquired or don't acquire it, I don't know what the appetite of the council is. I, I believe that you're gonna have two, two and a half, two million seven hundred and fifty thousand in this thing, uh, by the time you bring it down to dirt, uh, that's gonna relate to about a two hundred thousand dollar per acre. What's the ultimate goal? How do, how does the city, how does the county get out of this thing whole? I don't know if there's been any ground sold at two hundred thousand an acre in Fergus Falls.
This, Mr. Mayor, council member, um, the CDA will be supportive and additive to the extent the city desires us to be, and so if the And so if the city says, "We're going to own this, we want to do separation only and utilize the dollars for that," that would be the, if, if that's how the, the application comes into the CDA, the CDA board will evaluate that and assess, can we be supportive in that application? If the request of the CDA board is, "We'd like you to take this on, do you have the capacity to oversee redevelopment to whatever extent funds allow?" That will also be the assessment of the CDA board. And so I would really defer to the CDA chair and the board members, once they receive your request, that formal request, in terms of how can you support the city of Fergus Falls, they'll evaluate that like they do every other project across the county.
Yep. Thank you, I appreciate it. Again, we're going to boil down to what's the plan, so, Mr. Mortensen?
Can I?
Laurel.
Quick question, in regards to the zoning and the housing. Clara, can you clarify how it's zoned out there, and can housing happen by conditional use out there, which is handled differently, or is it a complete rezone, which is my understanding, to get housing out there?
I think the way, so it's currently zoned B6, which does not have the option for housing, and I do not believe it is a conditional use that can be applied. We could look into a planned unit development, which does allow more flexibility with zoning code.
But we wouldn't, because the conditional use is not allowed, it wouldn't, we wouldn't, in essence, have to say yes with conditions to housing if the council didn't choose to. Planned unit development would be probably the only way we would be forced into housing if the council wanted to try avoid that out there.
Yeah, and, and maybe just to add some more clarity to the discussion about the, the grant skewing heavily toward housing, it, it was, when you put together a grant application, what you're doing is you're making a case for economic development in your community, and that does tie into our housing numbers, it ties into our employment, et cetera. So all of those things are discussed in an application, that doesn't necessarily mean that the outcome is going to be housing.
Right, one last question, Mike, then we'll close, close them, maybe the county commissioner still has something to add.
Quick comment. I think the, the question is, you know, is what is the plan, Councilmember Layton? The, the CDA has not been engaged at this point, so there's no master plan, no finished plan, other than to engage with the city to get this property ready for redevelopment, whatever capacity that looks like, whatever the city wants, separating the existing businesses, perhaps demolition, whatever it is. But there's no, at this point, because the CDA hasn't been engaged, there's no end plan. And so I can assure you, though, as, as a, as a county commissioner and as a member of the CDA board, I have a vested interest in seeing this plan, whatever, or seeing this project, if we are engaged, be as successful as possible. The county does not want to, does not want to see this fail either, so, just want to reassure the council of that fact.
Thank you, Sean.
Yep.
Last question, Mike.
Thank you, Your Honor, I appreciate it. Being on the task force, we learned a lot in our last meeting, and I think that's how this CDA agreement probably came to the table with us today, was we were, we were excited about a few things, we had some things going, we had some good discussion. But it, it appears to me today that maybe more discussion, we only had one meeting, I think we need to have another meeting, maybe before we push the CDA to the council here in, in my thoughts. I would hate to see the CDA agreement just go down here today and be shut out when maybe within 30 days, it could be a good prospect for our city. And I would hate to see it go forward and then not do anything with the mall as well. So one of the questions I have for the city attorney here this morning is, do we have the ability, or do I have the ability, to make a motion to table the CDA agreement at this time until we can have at least one or two more task force meetings to bring back to the council a little more information?
Yes.
I would make a motion, then, that we table the agreement with the CDA until the task force can come back, maybe in 30 days, with more information, so we don't make a mistake of either approving or denying the CDA this morning.
Second that.
I think I would caution in part on tabling it, because time is obviously of the essence, both from a grant perspective as well as a purchase perspective, and I think at some point in time, you know, we have to make a decision up or down, and we can drag things on forever and ever and ever and not make a decision, and then we become paralyzed by kind of over-analysis. So as much as I appreciate the, the desire to kind of delay, I don't know what we're going to gain by delaying. Everybody is fully adverse with the information, it's a question of yes or no. So I think, obviously, there is a motion on the floor to delay it, obviously, you know, that is a prerogative of the council to delay it, but I would warn that if we're going to keep delaying, then we will never make a decision on anything, and as a council, that looks bad on us overall.
One comment I guess I have, if we enter into the agreement with the CDA at this point, can we then engage more with yourself, Amy, other board members on, quote-unquote, "options" with the mall, and have a little more discussion to answer, like Mr. Layton's questions and things like that, so there's a higher comfort level with what happens with the mall? To me, we could make this decision and have less hypothetical conversations with your group than what we're having right now. Is that a lot, I'm seeing Sean nodding, is that a logical response?
And that was, Your Honor, understanding that a motion to table is not debatable, I, if I have the...
Oh, sorry.
...ability to speak without objection, I would, I would add a few points, but I don't want to disrespect the people that made the motion, because motion to table, I don't believe is debatable, so, or if, if you allow me to go on.
Speak.
You're good? Okay, all right, just a little bit of parliamentary procedure, but anyway, the second half of my discussion that I kind of alluded to this morning, I think hits on those exact points, what Laurel just mentioned. I, I wanted to mention that there is efforts that have begun, funded by Otter Tail Power, but in partnership with Otter Tail County and the city, to do a, a conditions assessment, and I just saw an update early this morning on where that's at. And what the end goal of that process is, is to provide some answers or knowledge related to a couple of different things. One is the utility situation, get a full understanding of that, and what the cost would be to separate those things. And, and two, and maybe as important, is the condition of the interior and exterior, including the roof of the structure, and what different scenarios may look like or cost. And that could be, I'm just speaking for myself here, that could be demolition, select demolition, it could be separations, it could be just simply, you know, restoration or cleanup, remediation of the mall. All of those things are going to have dollar amounts attached to them through this process, and I think that will then inform some of those better discussions that we can have with the CDA to get clarity on what that looks like. Unfortunately, I don't have a date that that work's going to be done, I was hoping to have something, but that's going to be ongoing, and it's going to probably push us right up to the date of, of closing, if not close to it. The reason that I feel times of the essence is be, two things, and, and the mayor hit on them. One is the, the deed funding, they're pushing back pretty hard right now, saying, "Give us a revised budget. Our original budget was based on a $1 million award." They're saying, "Give us a budget, we want to get these funds out before the fiscal year. If you're not going to take them, we need to know," and they're kind of, they're kind of checking it frequently, saying, "Come up with a plan, what's going to happen." The other kind of driver is that April 15th closing date. So this thing closes, or is proposed in the purchase agreement extension to close on April 15th. I think just in light of trying to be a good partner, I don't think it would be fair to us to wait till, you know, the end of March or April, to hand it over to the county and say, "Hey, you got two weeks, three weeks to do due diligence," not knowing exactly the timing of that Hammers report and what may go into their decision-making after that. So council's prerogative, you tell us what you want to do. We are going to continue to meet as a task force, but there may be some urgency in some of these actions, based on some of these external factors, so that's all I'll say, and thank you for the opportunity.
Your Honor, just one clarification. Regardless of the council's appetite, if they buy the mall or don't buy the mall, if we participate with a CDA agreement today, or a week from now, and we don't buy the property, it's just, it's done. Is that correct?
Your Honor, Councilmember Layton, no. If you pass the resolution entering into the CDA, you're in for, state statute reads five-year windows. So basically, you enter by resolution, you may withdraw participation by resolution, but that, there's a window, not less than 90 or more than 180 days prior to that, to the anniversary date of the resolution every fifth year. So if you approve the resolution, whether this project happens or not, you're part of the CDA for five years.
Correct, but we don't have, we're not obligated to buy the property.
Oh, absolutely. If you join the CDA, and ultimately, it's determined by the city council and the county board or the CDA that it's not in the best interest of Fergus Falls to acquire the property, you're not obligated to.
Right, and that contract with the Otter Tail County CDA could just sit there in a drawer and collect dust, unless we choose later to use it for another function.
Yep, yep, Your Honor, Councilmember Layton, and consistent with what Nick has said, not only today repeatedly, but in the past as well, he's kind of a broken record at this point, supportive and additive, they, they would come to the table if we invited them to the table on future projects. The other thing I would say is, whether they were working with the city on a project actively or not, the benefits that come along with the, the programs that the CDA has would be available to homeowners, property, or residents of Fergus Falls, builders, those types of things. I don't have all the details of those, I don't understand all the programs admittedly, but those things would be available to, to folks, one way or the other. Is that fair to say?
Couple of housekeeping questions. So the sample resolution we have has dates that are old in it, I would assume this is just a sample, and that at council, we would be working off of updated dates? Is that accurate?
Yes, that's accurate. There's tables in there, too, that I saw.
Okay, yeah, I saw those, too. Yeah, I wasn't going to go there, but yeah.
Yeah.
And then my other question, I guess, is, the county I know works with the HRA, and we have Mike here as well, does this decision impact the HRA from the city's perspective at all, or are, does that not have anything to do with this? I know the county HRA is, when I read the minutes and things, there's some interaction, but does it impact? I just think we should all know if there is any impact with our relationship with our HRA.
Yeah, good question, Your Honor, Councilmember Hildy. No, the HRA will still exist in its existing form and function, they still have the, the existing levy and, and those abilities, and as far as, you know, the, all the discussions that have taken place to today, there's been no suggested changes in that relationship. I don't... Michael, do you want to say anything more than that? So, no, yeah, status quo on HRA.
So we have a motion on the floor to delay the, or, the, the discussion on, on the CDA. Obviously, if you vote in favor, then that will obviously, you know, delay it. I don't know whether we have a timeframe of how long it would be delayed.
I think you said 30 days, did you not?
Thirty days.
Thirty days.
Your Honor, I never said the word delay, I said the word table. Table could be changed tomorrow, table could be changed at the council meeting, table could be changed in no time, so table, I never said the word delay.
Right, thank you. So we have a motion to table the decision for 30 days, or up to 30 days? Up to 30 days? Did you say 30 days?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Right. So maybe for Lance's benefit, do you want to do a roll call, maybe just for...
One.
Yes.
Rachel.
No.
Hildy.
No.
Fish.
No.
Joe.
No.
Ray.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
So the, the motion is not approved.
Your Honor, can I make a motion to move this to the meeting on Monday night, to open for more discussion and take a, make a decision on it on Monday night meeting?
Do we have a second for that?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Jim. We'll do a roll call again, just for clarity.
Mortensen.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Hildy. Fish.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
The motion is approved. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is discussion, obviously, got brought up about the attendance of the city attorney at committee of the hall meetings, and I believe legal representatives prepared a memo of what that additional cost would be. I don't know who wishes to speak to that, maybe Rolf?
I would be happy to, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, you have a memo before you. The mayor asked that I put together a proposal, if you want me to attend these early morning meetings, we're happy to do so. We work at the pleasure and desire of the council. The idea was to see what that might cost to include this, and I put together this memo that basically says is that, you know, I have historically been available to attend these meetings at the request of the mayor and the city administrator at no cost, and I'll continue to do that, do so, if that's what you choose, but if you'd like for my office to regularly attend these meetings, I anticipate the annual cost to be $7,800, and that's based upon two hours of attorney time at $150 an hour for 26 meetings, which is what it is. But looking at what the, you know, we're already at 45 minutes into this meeting, and I may have to rethink this because of the fact that I've, unless you have a hard start on an hour. So, and as I, and as the memo indicates, you know, this is based upon anticipated two hours of attorney time at $150 an hour for preparation, meeting attendance, and whatever follow-up there may be. And if the council wishes to do this, my office can either invoice this monthly for the actual time incurred at that rate at $150 an hour, or we can add it to the monthly retainer. It's up to you. And I also indicate in this memo that I'm not available for any committee of the hall meetings in, during the month of February due to existing conflicts in my schedule, so it's up to you what you want to do.
Ralph, just on a humor side, you can turn your clock on when you talk, and you can turn your clock off when you don't talk.
You know, I, Rolf, I don't, it's nice to have Rolf here. We did, it's true, if we need him here, we call him up and say, "Hey, Rolf, can you be here?" Andrew calls him, tells him he'd like to have him there. Seventy-five, or $7,800 budget impact, we don't have $7,800 in the budget for Mr. Nicomole. Our budget is very clear, how much we pay Mr. Nicomole a year, and this would be a budget impact. Now, seems like everybody wants to kind of just raise things, and it's like, where are we going to get the money to do it, for one thing? Rolf already comes when we want him to be here at his, you know, when we need him. So as a councilperson, if you think you want to see him at the meeting, you can give Andrew a call, and Andrew can discuss it, and then if you think it's warranted, then Rolf will be here, free of charge, right, Rolf? Up to this point?
It's not free, it's in his...
Well, I don't think he builds, I don't think he builds this work. On the second note...
In my opinion, yeah, you're right.
In your opinion, it's free, yeah.
On the second note of that question, I've dealt with lawyers, and I, I'd like to have Rolf be my lawyer, he's awful cheap.
Your Honor...
But I know he does this because of the way the city, the way structured the city is, so.
Couple of things, I know there's been discussion amongst councilmembers and with you, Mayor, and comments have been made about, are we going to continue doing two committees of the hall? Could, could meeting structure change a little bit as months go by here? So if this is the council's appetite, I don't know, we don't need to have those discussions now, and I think that that was maybe part of the retreat conversation. I know a lot of things are getting pulled out of consent agenda, so we've talked about how things can get repetitive because of that. I would think we should enter into this agreement on an hourly basis possibly, versus unless Rolf had appetite for, if the meeting structure changes, changing the, the way the pay structure changes.
I mean, I think ultimately, it's whether we want to spend, you know, $8,000 more dollars a year. I mean, typically, the committee of the hall was opportunity for discussion, so that, you know, the only time when the council makes official business decisions is on Monday night council meetings, and obviously, that's generally why the city attorney is at those meetings, because we're, we're making decisions, then, obviously, committee of the hall, we're not making a final decision, only about putting things on, really on the consent agenda, or they sort of like the agenda normal. So I think that's historically why there's not necessarily been legal representation at committee of halls, because it was more of an open discussion about items that get placed on the agenda.
Can I, can I add one thing? I mean, personally, I wouldn't cement the money. I mean, I'll take your money if you want to give it to me, but I wouldn't spend it, primarily because of the fact that I'm coming into these committee of the hall meetings blinded. I don't know what questions you're going to ask, and I'm happy to try to answer them if I can, but I may just punt and just say, you know, "I got to put some time in to put some legal research into this thing." The nice thing of coming into, coming out of the committee of the hall meeting is Andrew and I routinely, and I wouldn't... of the whole meeting is Andrew and I routinely, and I would, and I would probably even, and Bill and I routinely discuss what you discussed at these meetings in anticipation of if there's going to be any legal questions or legal issues for the Monday night. And that's, you know, like, and the good example was the Daily Journal. The discussion that we had last Monday night, I was prepared. I had reviewed what, what, what the council was considering, and I was prepared to answer your questions from a legal basis. But you can't expect your attorney to always have the answers like that. Sometimes we have to research, and it's, and I've said this before, it's not fair to you, and it's not fair to me to require a legal answer to a legal question right now. Laws change, and we have to research these things. And if you want competent, sound legal advice, then you got to give your city attorney an opportunity to research your questions. And so you do what you want. I'm happy to come if you want me here. But if it were me, I just don't think that the bang for your buck of having a representation here, at each meeting, I just don't think it's needed, but it's up to you.
Mr. Nicomole, I really appreciate you being prepared for the last meeting when we did discuss the Daily Journal. That's the type of legal representation I think this council deserves and needs. We're going through a change of council. There's going to be more dialogue, and there's going to be more wishes on every matter that we have. So your preparation, if you're working with Bill and Andrew, would be wonderful, because I think these hard questions you're going to continue. Thank you.
So somebody can make a motion or make a decision as what you would, what's the wishes of the council as to whether or not we want to spend $7,800 or not?
I'll make the motion not to have Ralph at the meetings.
That's a negative motion. You can't do that, can you?
You're right. I'm sorry, Jim. You're right.
You shouldn't. Yeah, you shouldn't. You can, but you shouldn't, because it gets, it gets confusing. Make the motion that you would like for me to be at these meetings, and if you do not wish to have that motion pass, then vote no.
What he just said. It's the easiest way to say it.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Scott. So Scott, Rachel's, and Scott Flommy have made a motion to have the city attorney attend committee of the whole. Obviously, you know, if you don't decide that, you vote negative. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Oh, it fails, fails.
I'm totally confused. Thank you.
All right. The next item on the agenda is PI number 8232, the seven, three-quarter million gallon storage reservation demo project. And we'll call upon the engineering representative.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Members, I'll start by saying Brian will be at the meeting on Monday. So if you have questions, hold those until Monday. I'm happy to attempt to answer them, but you will have the opportunity, if you have them, to ask Brian on Monday as well. But wanted to keep things moving here. The $750,000 gallon ground storage reservoir tank, which is up at our water treatment plant property, obviously in the ground, when I say ground storage, that was constructed back in 1914. So it's over 110 years old now. A 1993 report recommended replacement of that in the coming years, and then another 2018 study recommended demolishing and replacing the GSR as it's more than, how lived its useful life. City staff has thus far been able to maintain that reservoir in working condition, but it is time to see that go away, and other facilities have been constructed to maintain fire flow requirements and water needs of the city. Previously, the city council, I don't recall the exact date, it would have been the previous council ordered in the plans and specs. Brian has that, and so the action that he's asking for is to accept those plans and specs and then authorize him to go out for bids on this demolition project. We do have to follow the competitive bidding requirements, which require a 21-day publication, because the engineer estimate on the project is $550,000. Brian anticipates having a bid opening in late March. Once bids are open and tabulated, those will then be presented to the city council for their consideration. So you will see this item again, and the ask today is to move this to the council, with the council accepting plans and specs and authorizing advertising for bids.
Andrew, just one question, Your Honor. Is there an estimated timeframe, how long it takes to replace this thing? I mean, it's over 100 and some years old, and is there any impact to the citizens of the city?
Your Honor, Councilmember Morton, it's no impact, because we've taken other actions to replace this storage. Those things are on the network now, and so this can be taken out of service, or is already out of service, and the demolition will have no impact on the residents. So we anticipate primarily the work being completed in this calendar.
One other comment with that. We did recondition...
Let's make the motion first before we have discussion.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Who is the second? I can second.
Then we can discuss it.
Laurel.
Sorry, Jim. Somebody, who had a question?
No, no.
I was just going to point out, we did recondition the other ground storage, right?
Yeah, the million and a half was reconditioned prior to this one.
Yep.
Coming out of service.
The only other thing I'll say, Your Honor, is that this has been a planned project, and the funding comes through the water fund and is in the water fund, so we're prepared to expend that money.
Any other questions of Andrew? You want it on the consent agenda? You'd be happy?
Sure.
Thank you.
We should have it on it first. Sure.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign. Hearing none, the motion is approved. Would you like it on the consent agenda?
Yes, sure.
Right. The next item is the YMCA letter of intent for the former gas station. And again, Andrew is going to do his best to address that.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Members, I have been involved in this one, so I probably can answer a few more questions. Last time you saw this item, the letter of intent that was before you was for the YMCA to purchase the property. They have since submitted an amended letter of intent, and really what, what happens is they're asking, rather than purchasing the property, they're asking for a long-term service agreement. They've also committed in the letter of intent to improve the parking lot, make the connection with their existing lot, and then provide ongoing maintenance and upkeep. The reason that they landed kind of at that as the request as opposed to purchase is because when we dove into this issue, we discovered a few things related to properties that are acquired with conditional use deed, such as this one. So under Minnesota statute 282.01, which is included, I think, in the letter of intent and in the packet, if a property is acquired by conditional use deed through the tax forfeiture process, the uses are very limited. And one of the things that's covered under that is public parking and trailhead, which is in both the city's resolution from 2015 and then the county's resolution, basically approving the city's request. Both those things were mentioned as what the intended use would be. One being trailhead for the city, and two being overflow parking for the YMCA. So this request is certainly consistent with what the city's request of the county was and what the county's authorization was back in 2015. The other thing I will mention is that if we fail to utilize the property for those uses, there's some different conveyance options. One, it would have to go back to the state of Minnesota under the tax forfeiture law, or the county, and two, the city would have the ability, if the county agreed, to purchase the property at what they determine the market value to be. So essentially, there's very few, if any, options to sell this property to the YMCA, which is why they amended their request. I will mention at the tail end of the discussion here that there is a 30-year expiration on conditional use deeds, and because this took place in 2015, we're 10 years into that 30 years, so 20 years down the road, there's some flexibility as to what the city can do with the property. But in the meantime, we're really kind of locked into the use of trailhead and overflow parking for the YMCA as was requested and granted in those resolutions. So what we're suggesting as staff is we have the ability to prepare a long-term maintenance agreement with the YMCA, allow them to make those improvements to the property and begin utilizing that for the intended use.
I'll make a motion that we move this forward.
Thank you, Laurel.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Scott. Any discussion?
Andrew, can you explain kind of what maintenance and upkeep will entail, and what does that involve? Grass, snow, different things with the asphalt?
Yeah, Your Honor, Councilmember Morton, I'll be honest with you, that was the conversation Brian had with them. I was more on this side of kind of trying to figure out the legal obligations, but my conversations with Brian, it's understood that they would improve the parking. So if there was the need to repave the lot, they would be responsible for that striping, and then snow removal and any other maintenance and upkeep. So I would assume that would be classified as mowing, ongoing striping, some of those things.
Is there any difference in liability for the city when we have this agreement with them? Do we take a second on a liability that they're on the property quite a bit? Is there anything in that role?
That might be a legal question. We're going to get our money's worth.
Well, I mean, we have insurance covering people in our parking lots, sure. Whether there's accidents or something happens there, well, with their use, we're covered from an insurance perspective. I'm assuming that they maintain their own, you know, workers' compensation insurance, and they have their own liability insurance in place to cover whatever actions that they may have. But I would assume that the agreement, that if there is to be an agreement entered into, there probably should have a written agreement, and that there would be some insurance requirements that they would maintain, that would be pretty standard in agreement for, to be entered into regarding their use of our property.
Yeah, we, exactly. Thank you for that, Ralph. It would be consistent with our agreements that we would see on like the golf course, where offhand, I think it's $2 million aggregate and per occurrence kind of value. So they would have pretty significant insurance as part of the agreement.
Laurel?
One question. In the improvements, will they be looking at lighting for that area? And if so, are we going to require downlighting and things as we're going to be encroaching on closer to residential neighborhoods?
Your Honor, Councilmember Hildy, I don't know. That's a question that staff will propose to the YMCA between now and Monday.
Okay. Personally, I would like to see some requirement that we put in this agreement on how lighting in that area would be handled, so it's lit appropriately and done in a way that's friendly to...
We're not going to require...
Well, or to just, to light like their parking lots.
If they do, then they have to come and go through.
Yeah.
And Brian may know more about, I don't know the scope of like lighting for the roundabout project and what...
I just think that needs to be part of the conversation.
I'll, I'll reach out and have somebody prepared to speak to that on Monday.
Thank you.
With that, any other questions? If not, all those in favor of moving this forward, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign. Hearing none, the motion is approved on the consent agenda. And Brian can address the lighting in the packet. Okay, on the consent agenda.
Your Honor, Brian, is that a conference for the remainder of the week? So I'm not sure that you'll be able to address it in the packet.
Okay.
So we probably should. I love consent agenda, but we probably should have it as a separate item, if you want to address that.
We can take it off. Thank you. With that, obviously, item five was called. We have announcements of council meeting on Monday evening, council retreat on Friday, and then the next committee of the whole on February the 12th. With that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.